... The United States of America, we are to deliver all which is safe, one nation under God, and with the Lord we liberate and justice are our own.
Counselor Scingy, uh, military, counsel, president, counsel, president, president, six year with the home, and so, Scingy.
For a little bit, September eighteen, two thousand nineteen, this is me, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President, as day and age for rule of measures, September eighteen, twenty nineteen, this is me, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So at this time, we'll open our first public hearing, which is on the show, where we learn this nineteen dash one nine, where this is about tax, about the year, from the S and M. Five minutes to speak.
You want to go over, you know, I want to join the people in Hong Kong and go over.
And that's all I think there, by the way, I was the only one, well, there's several of us, that while the city of Binghamton honored the Communist Chinese, and they gave them trinkets here, was only one that spoke up against sex selection, the Allen Square, was a, was a terrible day in this city, this issue. Okay, um, the budget, no taxation without representation, this is a tax budget, the people of the First Ward have had no say in this budget, they've had no representation here, and they will not have that representation. Now, this council was notified by Mr. Scingy back in July, back in July, could have appointed someone, that's what's in the city charter, the First Ward would have had representation, doesn't happen. So, it's troubling, it's very troubling, and it wouldn't be troubling to me if Mr. Scingy was in the armed forces, made that fact known, but the fact of the matter is, he enlisted in the arm, uh, the Air Force to bug out here on important issues that may or may not have affected his political career. Uh, what are we doing about the contracts that are going to expire in two thousand nineteen, big labor contracts expiring? Uh, what are we gonna do, we gonna do what we did it do in the past, let them run out, let the bill build way, way up into the stratosphere, and then let some other group of politicians deal with it, deal with the mess, because the cans will get down the road? Does anybody have any idea, uh, what is the budget called for, did you tip your hat in negotiations? All right, how can you have a, a two-twenty budget when the labor agreements haven't been wrapped up? I don't understand, I don't understand. Any, any ideas on that? None? Well, so, the mayor's salary, the mayor's salary, yeah, the mayor in the United States makes about fifty-eight thousand dollars a year, fifty-eight thousand. I asked Mr. Papastri this question, that means Mr. David must be above average, way above average. Uh, COLAs, COLAs for city councils, a part-time job, I, I don't understand, people get part-time jobs all the time, you get part-time jobs in what's left of retail, restaurants, there's no COLA with a, with a part-time job, you know, if you, you know, I mean, it's ridiculous, ridiculous. So, how can you improve this budget for and behalf of the people of the First Ward, the First District, and the council person not being here, not being here, how can you do that? And an actual, you get an auto-response when you email Mr. Scingy, and it lists the numbers, and it makes it look like he'll be checking in, well, I don't know, I understand, basic training for a period of seven weeks at least, you are intercommunicating, I think that was a misrepresentation. So, you know, I wouldn't table this, now, Mr. Scingy says it's gonna be back on New Year's Eve, well, why not table this until, until then? Uh, the city is not sustainable with the current levels, and anybody that thinks that these surpluses, uh, are, are going to be there in the future, they're gonna be evaporating. And, you know, the movie, the Titanic, I, I think it cost two-hundred million dollars, it cost less than the sewer plant, except the sewer plant, the next time James Cameron is gonna make a movie, the next time James Cameron is gonna make a movie, you might as well make it in the sewer plant, because there's so much water coming in there on Monday, uh, that it looked like this, that, of the Titanic, all you needed was Leonardo DiCaprio. When are you gonna come and come to grips with reality in this city budget? This is not a real budget, it's a fugazi. It's a fugazi, it's a setup, it's a sting for the mayor's county executive run next year, that's what this is all about, it's all about financial engineering, structuring government, government programs, oh, and, 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 I, I was gonna add something, but I think I'll shut up now, thank you.
Anyone, anyone else wish to speak on the budget, so far? See none of the ones?
So now, we'll open a public hearing for local law nineteen dash one, amendment code, chapter two, sixty-five, housing property maintenance, establish local government code enforcement program for parking garages. However, it's important to know, following city council will open a public hearing tonight regarding this local law and public hearing will begin open for public housing until the following city council this week, on October twenty-third, uh, there was an error in the press inside bulletin, we were on the end of the property, published a public hearing announcement for tonight, therefore, according to necessary regulations for this local law, we will extend the public hearing until our next regular meeting.
Roundhouse day in October, uh, Jean Sollet, is, are we expecting a, a lot of private parking garages to be built, is that the genesis, I mean, the, the private parking garage could have fallen to hell and hand as there are the city ones. So, here the city, the city is making up a law, expanding the code to parking ramps, when the city has a lot of toll ramps to go to hell and hand, that's, you know, I don't understand this, I mean, is this, is this directed at Lord's Hospital, who's this, who's this here, I, I don't really understand it, and it, this, you know, unless there's something I don't know, maybe somebody's gonna build a parking ramp, maybe these parking ramps, maybe these parking ramps are going to be privatized, that would be, that would be something, wouldn't it? If somebody put in an offer for those parking ramps, and people would say, geez, they're in a terrible condition, well, this would mollify any, any doubts on that. So I think something's out, I think something's days, it's not unusual in this city, uh, you know, of all the issues that needed to be addressed, I, because, simply because, from what I stand there, because no parking garages, unless this is directed at Pike, and...
Yes, the Department of Public Affairs, we need the best of John, he's coming through here today.
Okay, 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 well, okay, well, then maybe, maybe something on this would be, would be, well, let me ask you, how the city, how the city of Binghamton can force code on its own ranch? No, because I'm gonna, I'm gonna go down there, after this is passed, I'm gonna go to City Code, and what's gonna happen?
The, the deprimitions are probably need to go.
Yeah.
The, all the provisions are probably need to park.
And this applies to existing parking garages, see? Okay, well, you ready to spend more money, bringing those to the code?
Anyone else wish to speak on the parking ramps, so far? See none of the ones?
So at this time, we'll set a public hearing, move the city council and mayor of the city council to a public hearing regarding the proposed zoning laws, chapter four-ten, modern zoning regulations, and streamlined planning, including the process, October twenty-third two thousand nineteen, and be very quickly scheduled, this is me.
Okay, I'm public cabinet, five minutes to speak, now just state your name, write your name on the paper, please, and be respectful.
Target Dallas, Southside, I'm gonna read a, a post that I, I published online yesterday at binghamtonbridge.org, titled, "Binghamton City Council President Tom Scanlon Refuses to Allow Discussion on Good Government Reform Proposals." Throughout the year, local reporting and community activism shined a spotlight on a number of unethical and illegal actions taken by city assessor over the last few years that generated significant financial tax benefits for Mayor Rich David. Some of the local reporting even resulted in internal investigations by the city attorney's office, admission of wrongdoing, it was a mistake, and policy changes in the assessor's office. However, when presented with sensible good government reform measures to restore the integrity of the local assessment system and protect local taxpayers against such questionable conduct in the future, city council president Tom Scanlon has refused for over a month to even allow for a discussion at the council work session. In fact, the council president has yet to even show the decency to respond to multiple email requests, some of which were made through the city clerk on my request, all the screenshots of the emails are included in the post. To start, back on August twenty-eighth, I followed the advice of Binghamton city attorney Sharon Sorkin, and I submitted two requests for legislations, this is the process by which citizens can participate in local democracy. They sought to improve accountability and transparency, and there are two very simple proposals, one, Financial Ethics Disclosure Act for Binghamton officials, it basically takes the same ethics reporting process that Brune County requires of its officials and public board members, and extends it to Binghamton officials. I thought this practical step would be a no-brainer, particularly since GOP city council member, G. Vani Scingy, is one of the three members of the Brune County Board of Ethics that oversees and reviews the county's disclosure reports. The second proposal's annual reporting of assessment reductions, which would require the assessor to report annually, in a very readable and simple spreadsheet, all the privately-owned properties in the city that received a reduction in assessment in the prior year. Now recall, Mayor David did not go before the Board of Assessment Review, a public board, to argue for a reduction, he didn't use a lawyer, instead, he simply walked down, on a workday, from his executive suite on the fourth floor, into the office on the second floor of the guy he has sole authority to reappoint, and requested an informal review. The assessor independently and quietly agreed to slash the mayor's property assessment by twenty-seven percent, generating significant tax savings annually on the mayor's tax bill. This simple new reporting requirement would bring full transparency to the assessor's independent decisions, and serve as a strong deterrent to future unethical or illegal conduct. These two measures, they're nonpartisan, they're no-cost, they're pragmatic, they bring greater transparency to local government, reduce the chance for unethical conduct, so, President Scanlon, why are you refusing to even entertain it? Perhaps I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, and say that somehow the city clerk got your email wrong, and you haven't been receiving my emails, um, but isn't this worth even a discussion?
They're being reviewed as we speak.
They're being reviewed as we speak, so, over a month, you couldn't have just had the courtesy to, to suggest that, or is that something you came up with when you saw my post? So, I would ask, I wrote down that I was gonna come down here and ask you, and I will ask any and all council members to personally sign on to the RLS, right, maybe this is a, which is not political party, right, not partisan, pragmatic, the more it's signed on, it basically obligates the council president to put it on the work session agenda for discussion, so, these simple, no-cost measures, greater integrity, greater capability, restore trust in the process, bring transparency to the most important, incredibly important assessment system. So, can I just ask, is there others here that would be willing just to allow for a sensible discussion on these proposals? Anyone?
Yeah, I mean, I'm looking for a six, three, two.
Thank you, Councilman, if it's taking.
I, I would as well.
Thank you, Councilman Taylor, um, so now, participation, I'm only talking about transparency. I have been bringing this topic up since the beginning of the year, county legislator Bob Westler has, has suggested these to you all, six months ago, but if hats I want to share your cards, discrepancy, go for it.
Hello, my name is Shaw Nicole, I'm in the First Ward, I'm also a well-known libertarian, I have my two children here tonight, who are being homeschooled, and this is part of our civics lesson in government. Um, I would like to know, when we can start repealing some of the laws, because there are some really ridiculous overreaches of jurisdiction into the people of Binghamton's personal lives, and how we parent our children, and the choices that we make for our children, also, what we do with our personal property, um, a good example of this would be the, um, white helmet law, um, that's a parental decision, I don't see how you have any authority to begin with, to indulge yourselves or mess yourself with the authority for what our parenting choices in regards to our children's safety, they're my children, I shouldn't be allowed to decide things like that. Um, another thing is, is, um, that when I was in high school, is when I believe it was twenty to crap, and the city council decided to make a law telling people that they couldn't keep vehicles that were not registered, or not inspected, or, or whatever reason, they would be then considered junk, and they're allowed to have these vehicles on their property, I'd like to know who the hell anybody is to tell somebody else what they can and can't do with their personal property, especially when it is about keeping other personal T, and if you don't know what personal T is, that are movable household, household goods. Why they can't decide that for themselves, why do any of the bureaucrats get to decide that for the people who are indeed the property owners? And then as far as this whole property tax thing goes, why are we having to pay taxes on domiciles? I mean, we have natural rights, correct, such as food, such as shelter, and water, and clothing, but yet, we're being, and we're taxed for our shelter. I thought the citizen of that, as a homestead, was you couldn't tax it, but yet, here you are, taxing it, and then, I didn't even understand that, how they even assess people's personal property, because it seems to be done in a way that very much is not in favor of a particular group of people, therefore, it is obvious, because it is against some people, but yet, it's very much in favor of other people, particularly those who happen to own a lot of commercial property, which by the way, the citizen of that would be taxable, as , um, corporations are creatures of law, so therefore, they would be subject, as a commercial entity, to certain taxes on the property, uh, you know, commerce, so, um, how come there has been no discussion about repealing some of these just insane overreaches? Um, why is it that certain people's businesses are favored over other people's businesses? And then every time I hear the word, let's tax more, let's tax more, it's always about helping the poor people, I have a poor person, this doesn't help me at all, all it does is drive up costs for me, it creates problems for me, because it limits my choices. I, I'd like to know why this continues, and why this is okay.
You have one minute, maybe?
That's it.
Good evening, I am not a resident here, and I'm given permission to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. My name is Kenny Greenleaf, and I'm the region president of Central Region CSEA. As head of the union, representing twenty-eight plant workers, in addition to more than forty-five-thousand workers who live and work in central New York, I'm here once again, to share our union's frustrations over the lack of political leadership regarding an important community issue, on whether or not private ties to this facility. We just want to know what the plan is here, the deadlines to produce and award have passed, and per the RFP, a transition was set to begin at the beginning of the month, so what's taking so long? Our members of the plant have been working their hardest to operate the plant, but morale is at an all-time low, could you try and put yourself in their shoes? Just like you, they mind what's best for the ratepayers in this community, they operate the plant every day, not knowing if they will have a job in the next few months, not knowing if critical positions will be filled, and not knowing whether the city council will enable them for success, frankly, they are being set up for failure. No one is being hired to fill vacant positions at the direction of the owners, all in order to attain the talking point of sewage rates in the city of Binghamton, this is just ridiculous. After all the talking concern for the plant going forward, post-construction, you would think a priority would be enabling this plant staff to do their jobs, even without more support, they continue to do their jobs at very high level, because at the end of the day, they understand better than anyone that impact of their work, that is the benefit of your local workforce, they have a level of concern for the impact on this community that is unmatched. Almost all of you have said that you support the plant staff and the union members, but I listened to your conversation about unfounded positions at the plant, I was disgusted, frankly, um, that, uh, most of you talked about these positions, no guard for the impact on the plant staff, the only concern shown was for making sure that we could say that you didn't raise the sewage rates for the cit, for the residents of Binghamton, however, the residents in Binghamton are not aligned to the current situation with a construction project, and the inevitability that the rates will go up, it's not like these positions would lead to a massive increase in rates, so why do that? For the talking point? Well, if you had kept the positions, all you could have said that you were ensuring the success of an important project that is to improve the sewage treatment plant, what's wrong with that talking point? In the end, our members will continue to deliver great services to the ratepayers, because that's what they do every single day, and that's what they have done. They just want to know what the plan is going forward, they want to know what the deadlines are that are being passed, they want to know what the future entails, just like the ratepayers, our members have lives to plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman of this city should be known as a good place to work, and, uh, these people here, these CSEA workers that are operating the sewer plant, are being treated just horrible as people, as people, you know, you don't treat people like this, you don't, you don't act alike this, you don't keep them twisting in the wind, unless, as Judge Judy often says, there's no such thing as coincidences. Uh, I think that this deal from either, there's only two explanations for this deal, either nobody involved in the sewage treatment plant knows what they're doing, and it's just, just bobbing off, uh, or, or, this whole thing, the way the RFP was structured, the way all this stuff is going down, is deliberate, is deliberate, the people would not know which end is up, and, you know, you're gonna sock it to them at the end of the year. Uh, I, I don't see, you know, I don't, there, there's no business to have this much contempt for its workers, and if this was any other unionized department in this city, th, this wouldn't be done to them, it wouldn't be done to them, I mean, uh, we've had fire stations exposed, where, you know, like, eight people, four people, six people were affected, I mean, it didn't go down like this. Uh, the police department, they were, I mean, I, I don't understand this, why are these people treated like dogs? What, what has this mayor, uh, what does he think these people are beneath him? That they're not entitled to dignity, that you would treat somebody, I mean, you would treat the guy that delivers your papers like this, you know, hey, I'm stopping the paper, I'm moving, you know, twelve-thirty-one is my last, that means, I, I, this city's not operating well, and this, this is the thing, now, as a, an unnamed member of the sewage treatment board told me, he says, we should at least turn it on and see if it works, and I think that that is a, a position that is well-grounded, I mean, do you invest in a race car, you know, and do you buy a horse, and you decide on who's gonna train the horse before you, 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 uh, watch it go around the track once, or twice, or three times? I mean, I, I don't understand it, it's, it's terrible, it's, it's just terrible, you know, I mean, Chris, would you, would you treat your workers like this, you wouldn't treat your workers like this if something was up, you know, I, I, I don't understand it, I mean, all these people want is, is, is to be notified of what's going on, I mean, there's nothing, you know, what's going on, I mean, how can you have an RFP, past the date, you mean to tell me that that RFP is valid now, after, you're gonna resurrect it? You know, I mean, uh, this is very bad for the city, and it inspires absolutely no confidence, and it's clear, uh, that the mayor is in a worse habit of this, and he's looking for political cover, you know, I mean, people get ahead, they know, they know, I mean, they, they knew when, uh, spectrum, time order, that deal, people knew that, that private equity swap, whatever it was, they knew that their cable rates were gonna go up to covering, and people know about this, so, so don't thank people for, for being dumb, but, I mean, it's bad enough we got a plant that I don't believe will work when they turn it on, it's bad enough that we got this urination match between the county executive and the town of Eschville, and the mayor about the closure of Eschville Road.
Yeah, what better to do?
Who's got the permit, who, who doesn't get the permit, you know, this night, nagging forth, what? Again, this isn't any way to run the city, it's, it, it, you know, you, you're treating people, I mean, what is this, Kmart, you know, Kmart, the guy gets a tele-tack, you're done, Saturday, Friday, you're done. Saturday, Friday, you're done. So let's treat these people like the men that they are, like the union members that they are. The fact that they have a contract, a decent, honorable, tax-paying, good citizens. Let's treat them better, give them the dignity that they deserve, and give the city an answer, and turn on the damn plan. And if it doesn't work, call the people that are building the plant responsible.
Gary Edwards, thirteen Clarendon Drive. I work at the plant. Sewage treatment plant. So I was here three weeks ago, um, asked where we were at with the bids, with everything. And I'm pretty sure I was told that by the end of the month, we would know something. So we're nine days into October, and we still know nothing. Who's being held accountable here? Why don't you guys ask what's going on? Why is it only in Conrad and Daleings? And why, why does nobody else seem to care, seem to want an answer like we do? And I would add, anybody? I would love to hear somebody, you know, somebody's reason. Excellent.
Ms. Menes, please. I have been asking, as you all are supporting. Everybody is getting trained right now because everybody's going to be staying. I mean, we're training the union workers after two work, okay? Um, we're also, we also said we're looking for management. It's not for you guys. How many times do I have to say that?
I'm pretty sure there are creative subjects for everybody.
No.
I'm pretty sure, but I could be wrong.
Maybe I am, please. And you know what? This is the Eschville City Council anyway.
So let's do that.
It has to get through. Sometimes you are a nation, and I'm sorry.
I am a nation.
You are getting played by citizen action. They are scaring you guys.
I think we're getting played by everyone.
Because they're scaring you guys for no reason, because it is election time, and they are trying to use you as pawns. I've seen it done before at the American Civic.
So let's just hold it down.
I've seen that before with our union members, and they're doing it to you guys again. Thank you.
That still doesn't answer anything. Where are we in the bidding process? Why is it out? If it is done, why are we worried? Why isn't something said? Why doesn't it go through, say, "We're not doing that"? So you can't say anybody's scaring us. We're waiting for you guys to tell us. We're not waiting for anybody else. I don't, I don't play any of the political bullshit games. I just want to know.
Why, 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 that's important?
Then let's go. Talk to that guy right next to you and say, "Let's have the answers." I'm waiting for someone to stand up and say, "There's only three bids. It's not rocket science, right?"
Yes, this is for a complex, so we have to make sure we have it ready to go.
So now we're waiting for it to ready to go? Were you guys down there when the, um, fine streams were?
I'm arguing with you, sir, so if you stop.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just asking if anybody came down when the fine streams were boiling over and flooding the basement? Because it's put together so well.
And there's also the time to write, when, so the bitch is never not after it.
Okay.
Obviously, it's all.
Yep, and you should know that because you were down there, not back there.
I know that, but it's certainly, thank you.
So, accountability, there is none, as everybody's been saying. Uh, I just wanna know, so I can log with my life, like everybody was saying that just when it was going. Should I sell my house and move south? Should I, you know, upgrade my house, stay here? I would like to know if I have a job. I don't care who's scaring me, who's not scaring me. I would just like the double answer, period. I don't care who it's wrong. I want, set the stone, the answer. No, we're not doing this. Yes, we are doing this. It's, it's pretty easy. But we're dragging our feet, construction's here behind. You know, there was timelines laid out for this, oh, we're behind on this. Well, who's accountable? Who's accountable for anything? Nobody, apparently. Nobody sticks to any dates. Nothing. It's, it's, it's crazy.
L V V, baseball workers from New York, I work for the Binghamton Johnson City doing sewage plant. I share the same frustrations as well as everybody else at the plant. Uh, we're getting sick and tired of our own. We're getting sick and tired of not knowing what's gonna happen. Same thing with Gary, we're gonna be getting sold together, it sounds like. Because I'm not gonna work for another company. I came here to work for the city of Binghamton. These are my rivers. I'm not gonna have a company that's gonna come in here and say, "Oh, we're gonna do it this way", and we can argue until, "Oh, that's not correct. It's not the right way to do it", but in the end, we're our boss, right? Working for the city, you guys are the boss. You guys tell us what we're doing. I'm not gonna jeopardize our rivers and work for a company that, you know, Flint, Michigan, look at that. What is this? I don't want my people on that. So, I, everything I was gonna say tonight was already said. I'm not gonna sit here and waste your guys' time anymore. But we, we just need to know what's going on so we can find out what we're doing with the rest of our lives. Thank you.
Anyone else who wants to speak, please go forward. See, now we'll, what?
Sir, you know, red-faced. You should be down, you know. I think I'm gonna park. Just man it.
My name's Lorette Kistner. I live at thirty Mark Road in Windsor. Please permission to speak to the group?
It's already been addressed.
Okay. I work with Helial Health, um, detox, and inpatient. And I also work with Second Chance Housing. And I just wanted to, um, make you aware that we have a really bad problem as far as, um, the homeless. When, um, an addict is ready to leave, they are taking the DSS, and they are putting in one of many places that within two weeks, their back won't detox. We have come up with, um, a way to help these people, but for some reason, people think we are trying to open a treatment center. When you open a treatment center, you need to have Oasis involved. You need to have, um, the Department of Health. You need to have the DEA. Um, these are all government, um, organizations. Um, we just want a safe place for, um, addicts who really wanna be clean and need a second chance. So we're just, I'm just asking you to work with us to give people second chance. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who wants to speak, please go forward. See, now we'll close this segment of the meeting. Your Director Resolution one-nine-dish-eight-zero, Considered NPA. Counselor Pepsner, please.
One-nine. One, it's over.
Let's try it again. Your Director Order is one-nine-dish-one-zero-six, Considered Finance Counselor Pepsner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration of Detective Order List nineteen-dish-one-zero-six.
Seven.
This is an order list to amend the twenty-nineteen budget. It's totally fine, mine is one longer than that.
Question to Congress? Question to call? We're calling.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor O'Connell.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Pepsner.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six eyes, one answer.
Your Director Order is one-nine-dish-one-zero-seven, Considered Finance Counselor Pepsner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration of Detective Order List nineteen-dish-one-zero-seven.
Seven.
This is an order list to amend the twenty-nineteen budget. The twenty-nineteen, seventy, justice, and two, food, board, budget. For additional appropriations, you would prefer me to be, uh...
Question to Congress?
All, uh...
Question to call?
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Brown.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Pepsner.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Aye.
Aye.
Six eyes, one answer.
Your Director Order is one-nine-dish-one-zero-eight, Considered Finance Counselor Pepsner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration of Order List nineteen-dish-one-zero-eight. This is an order list adopted in the tax budget for the year twenty-fifteen, twenty twenty.
Question to Congress? Counselor Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Let's start by thanking my fellow council members for, you know, spending the last couple of weeks spending, uh, a huge chunk of time working through the budget together. But it's always an exciting time to really take on with the homeless and people. Uh, at the end of the day, it's a budget that I think we're all happy about. I'm glad that we were able to work together throughout the budget process to, you know, increase taxes a little bit even more. I think that's something that we, we all want unanimously. So I'm very happy about that. I really had a few disagreements. Uh, but at the end of the day, I just wanted to thank all of you, and then also our partners for coming down, uh, and, and talking to us, uh, about the changes, why things are the way that they are, uh, you know. If, if, uh, if the budget line isn't completely spent by the end of the year, why does there need to be a little bit of pushing, or why does there not to be? Uh, you know, we had a department that's there, uh, much later than they normally do. Really go through this to us, and I just wanted to thank all of you and all of the work we put in process. Thank you.
Other questions to Congress? Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I look at the, the, uh, the council, as you said, there's a, it really was a good work to the environment. Questionably asked, while we're going to choose the questions, disagreements were slight. Uh, and what we did a little different this year is sort of trying to, uh, put the budget off into the, that's the time. We put it through a two-week period rather than a one-week, spread it out so we didn't have to be there. I remember nice when we had to order dinner in because we were there from five o'clock to ten-thirty, eleven o'clock at night. And we were there maybe an hour and a half, maybe two hours. Uh, so we were sharp on that evening, Martin, uh, came down, and we were able to look at it with a clear head rather than being there for four, five hours. We didn't know what was going on, so, uh, it worked out well. I hope that the future councils, uh, think about that and how they, they can spread out, uh, time, date, and, 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 uh, quickly. And we, uh, we did fine, thanks to our pound drawers, so much for that money. Uh, we were able to take a three-point-zero-five decrease to a three-point-one-six decrease to the city cap. So, uh, it was a great budget to begin with. We were able to do this a little bit better. And, uh, uh, have you worked out, the part at the end were, uh, really, really good to work with. They did their job. They came down barefoot, but they, there was no fluff up we could find, uh, that they could actually access. So, uh, it was a budget workable. There was a hairband in there. Glad about it all. Thank you.
Other questions to Congress?
Other question.
Question to call?
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Brown.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Pepsner.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six eyes, one answer.
Your Director Resolution one-nine-dish-eight-zero, Considered NPA, Counselor Pepsner.
Thank you, Mr. President. This, uh, I ask for unanimous consideration of Resolution nineteen-dish-eight. Sorry. This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an extension agreement with the Binghamton City School District for school resource optimization and the high school and middle schools for twenty nineteen through twenty twenty.
Question to Congress? Counselor Pepsner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is a program that's been going on for three years now, with police officers and means, uh, high school, middle schools. And it's a great program, the pop-up, getting the police, uh, where the kids can see them in a, in a great light rather than seeing them, uh, in their neighborhoods where they're only having somebody in, let's say, this, uh, S situation. Uh, the school, they're able to, uh, speak with the police officers. They can all, they can all their names. Uh, I just think it's a great, uh, for, for, for all of the police and for the schools. And I wish we could find a way to do it in elementary schools also, where, uh, it's good to see that the police are good people, they're effective, and that to harass them is maybe. Yeah, I'm pretty sure we could look to do it in elementary schools. Thank you.
Other questions to Congress?
All, please.
Question to call?
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Brown.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Pepsner.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six eyes, one answer.
Your Director Resolution one-nine-dish-eight-one, Considered NPA, Counselor Pepsner.
Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration of Resolution nineteen-dish-eight-one.
Seven.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an extension agreement with Binghamton University, where the university pays out, uh, to, uh, nineteen.
Question to Congress?
Call, please.
Question to call?
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Pepsner.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six eyes, one answer.
Your Director Resolution one-nine-dish-eight-two, Considered Finance, Counselor Pepsner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Dr., I ask for unanimous consideration of your Director Resolution nineteen-dish-eight-two.
Seven.
This is a resolution authorizing the city of Binghamton to accept a donation provision to a local department in the degree of the city, where the bus transfer gate is the parking department for the New York United Strip.
Question to Congress? Question to call?
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Brown.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Pepsner.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six eyes, one answer.
Your Director Resolution one-nine-dish-eight-three, Considered Public Works and Parks. Counselor Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in asking unanimous consideration on Resolution nineteen-dish-eight-three. Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter the professional services agreement with partners due this, EPC for preliminary engineering and design services for the Department of Public Works transportation.
Question to Congress?
Call, please.
Question to call?
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Pepsner.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six eyes, one answer.
Your Director Resolution one-nine-dish-eight-seven. Your Director Resolution one-nine-dish-eight-five.
Eight-four.
Eight-four. Your Director Resolution one-nine-dish-eight-four, Considered Public Works and Parks, Counselor Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I stand in asking unanimous consideration on Resolution nineteen-eight-four.
Seven.
Resolution authorizing the mayor to enter the supplemental agreement number one with New York State DOT construction, construction supervision and inspection for rehabi- rehabilitation of Bellin Street over Pierce Street and Conrad Avenue over Pierce Street, pin number nine-seven-five-four dot zero-two. Thank you.
Question to Congress?
Call, please.
Other question to call?
Counselor Lewis.
Aye.
Counselor Brown.
Aye.
Counselor Taylor.
Aye.
Counselor Pepsner.
Aye.
Counselor Montz.
Councilman Montz.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six ayes, one answer, six reasons. Your decree of resolution, one ninety to eight five. Considered findings, Councilman Pepsner. Thank you, Mr. President. I ask for unanimous consideration of resolution nineteen to eight five.
Sorry.
This is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter payment of taxes agreement idol with J D properties, M L C for the three age and age of three. Questions or comments? Councilman Taylor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to start by voicing my strong, strong, strong desire to see this project not from myself but from constituents of the North Side and of the city. As a, you know, statistically in terms of studies done by local agencies and the addition of many council members, county legislators, and the mayor's office, there is a distinct lack of quality for housing in our community. And this agreement that we have before us tonight will ensure that hundreds of accessible for housing units in our community will be quality, and that's what we'll do here, quality for housing units for lower income residents for years and years to come. There is New York State tax credits that are in addition to strict section eight restrictions that currently exist attached to this. They will ensure that rents will not go up on property and, you know, the length of this deal is so, this is the problem of history too, years. But I also want to make sure here's safety of the property, the safety of the residents. That's a really, really important thing here that especially Councilman Brown's push at the word set and on on it, this notion that, you know, we have a lot of safety concerns in this neighborhood and on this property as well to elevate the level of living and to elevate, you know, safety concerns and a new property owner, three million dollars of investment in the property, that's going to make a real difference in the lives that blow up in the whole city. If there are any, you know, concerns or anything that council members have, love to talk about it, but I do think this is a really important project. Thank you, everybody.
Councilman Brown. Councilman Brown.
Thank you, everybody. I do support this very much. One thing I'd like to add is it's mixed use, which is even better. We do a bit of justice when we take our low income, put them all in large housing units because there's no way for privacy. See, we're all, we all learn from others' behavior. We all realize what other people are doing. People work that way. So, when we put people in mixed use where they have low income, they're moderate income, just like the high income, they're learning by seeing how the lifestyles are with other people. That's something that I've always held in my life. That's why I work a lot in the low income. And try to shame their children and teach them that, you know, there's others, there's another life out there. You know, when I grew up, I worked very hard and missed a big kids. My dad was a factory worker, my mom was a stateful worker and schizophrenic. I had a very bad, hard childhood. I was very ignorant, but I had adults in my life who stepped up and showed me a better way of learning. And I got to go to my home and I got to learn that way of living. And I learned really for mixed use and something that you can't have in that. Bless these people. And also, my comment said for the safety, I have, you have roles in that complex that are scared to go off after work because there's predators that are in any of the room. And they're scared for their safety. This needs to stop, and I'm very glad to support this and make sure that it will stop. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Montz.
Thank you, Mr. President. I kind of reiterate on Councilman Taylor's and Councilman Danny Krantz, but people also don't realize this is thirty-two-year pilot with two years in the beginning, usually under construction, you don't pay. Well, they are paying full taxes because these buildings exist. Also, it's going to be a gate. It's going to have cameras. This is a property that has not been remodeled, fixed, worked on in years. Something I think we need to see happen in the city. And if it's a property, if it's not, it's going to collapse. And people do need a better lifestyle. So, I agree with this project and this pilot. Everybody in the pilot section should agree with this one. I think it's very important. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Pepsner.
Thank you, Mr. President. Originally, we talked about this property and I drive by, I don't say daily, but I drive by this property quite often. And since what I do, I drive by and I really pay most attention to the city, the apartment buildings. I understand that there's twenty-two buildings in this property, thirty-six apartments. And so, it's community itself. And so, it's a bit of a broken building. We heard of residents and police and county calls are calling there. Really, people, we want to improve the life of every resident in the city. And so, after listening to Mr. Eddie last Monday night in our meeting and realizing that the deal itself is how it's made up with the New York State, their programs, and this is the kind of deal we came up with, you know, tax credits, loans, loans, and stuff like that. And the end result is for that to happen, they needed to get the pilot with the city so that they would be, they would know, you know, what the taxes would be for the next three years. It's all written out because we, we as residents don't have that right. We don't know where the taxes are. But it's starting, we're not getting any break orders down below the break date now. It'll be an increase of a certain percentage. Same part taxes go down actually the week they have this one now, maybe not pay more taxes. So, the fact that they're going to make these improvements will be partly workforce, partly low income subsidized housing where the tenant will pay what they get for, depending on the form of the, they have, depending on how they, whether they make it or not. So, and that's not forever. I think that goes on for this so long. I think the people, people that improve, people that have jobs, but they can afford to pay the eight hundred dollars a month rent to live with this like that will be subsidized according to their, so there's a lot of things from the fact that they said they're going to have staff that will interview who they're going to run to, that they will have people there that will keep an eye on things. It's certainly going to be an improvement of what was going on there now. So, that when we do drive by there, the people that live there will get, you know, will have a better life than what we're looking at just going through the fifteen and a half It is a pilot, and I said that I can have support for any more pilots at this point because the ones that we have drilled in the, in the past, I thought, had merit because they were buildings that needed to be occupied most part. They were empty shells that weren't in the past. So, we all first saw a vision and in order to fulfill that vision, and with our backs starting the way it is, they gave the pilot, they gave the rule of taxes, and the taxes again were substantial to start. And so, and every big group, downtown is a perfect example to show all these student housing, market rate housing, and more. It hasn't been one item to cross the board. We all have pilots, we all approve, not only the life of residents, but the life and security of downtown in different parts of the city. And so, again, I will, I will support this pilot, like I said, up until this, up until this evening. I believe it's not going to have your hearing from different individuals and hearing about the police reports throughout us and the quality of life that we talk about, quality of life issues now all the time. That's what I hear a lot of the most. Neighbors want to be able to live in a quiet neighborhood and safely. And I think, and I do hope that by moving, we create a good quality of life and safety for our, for our community.
Other questions or comments? Councilman Lewis.
So, I'm going to be sixty-seven years old. I was about to go, and I think a lot about, you know, that time span, you know, what's the cost, what's the benefit to the city considering three of this? And, you know, the thing that makes me a little bit, a little bit jealous about, you know, pilot setting for that long is, you know, I spoke to a lot of people who know a lot about this, and I don't know if it really makes sense for how strong are these tax, like the provisions of these tax credits, how strong, how strict are they in community, these people? And I totally confidence, you know, say about over the next three or two years, you know, a lot of things can happen to the North Side, it can happen to that neighborhood. Basically, what we're making the decision on tonight is to protect this, this housing complex and set aside for housing for the next, for the two years. That, that by itself is, you know, is pretty applicable to me. Because then that's what I've spoken about, a deal is big, project is big, that has implications for such a long time, like, you know, is, is, well, it's the same thing I said, I should put this, you know, coming into city malls process. I feel like, you know, I will, when they're in person, introduce this to us, it's promised about information is going to merge us, like, they answer some of our questions, that information was the question to us, which is not so much is, is how this, how this kind of thing is going to happen in the past. I would just like to see, I would like to see issue is back to, decision is back to treated a little bit more, a little bit more seriously. We're asking, we're asking serious why, you know, messing around, trying to, oh, of course, we're just trying to understand, you know, what we're starting to monitor, especially with the decisions. I mean, not all, not necessarily taking decisions for, you know, for people thirty-two years from now, when they're thirty-two years old, you know, it's a big, a big decision for us, I know you need or thirty-two years. And I guess I would just like to see with this process, I would really like to see more access, better time, information, and, you know, what other things that we have to be able to decide to evolve. I, you know, I'm a favorite, there aren't any, you know, pilot things that, that you're seeing, getting excited about. But, you know, addressing, addressing, obviously, the margins, whether or not by itself, addressing say, possibly, the rural housing. I'd also like to see, I would also be used to seeing senior housing to be addressed in the city as well. I can see myself a little bit more, a proper structure, you know, something like that. I really, you know, I really would like to, just really, this body should, you know, assist on having access to the best of the nation's possible, the time and matter, so that we can be a part of our, in, when the city, we're making decisions. This is, I know there's a lot of questions that I still have that I haven't been able to fully address.
Other questions or comments? Questions or call? Councilman Lewis.
Aye.
Councilman Brown.
Aye.
Councilman Taylor.
Aye.
Councilman Pepsner.
Aye.
President Scanlon.
Aye.
Six ayes, one answer, six reasons. Your decree of resolution, one ninety to eight five. Considered findings, Councilman Pepsner. Thank you, Mr. President. Anything to surprise you?
It's fine. Tomorrow is the Gableton Y P summit, the Young Professional Summit organized by the Gableton Chamber of Commerce. Young people are involved. Communities thrive when, when the young people in the community are thriving, they're excited to be there, but they believe they have friendships and relationships, and they want to start businesses, and they have, you know, much more connections and everything like that. The Life Summit is what that's all about. I'm looking forward to being there and doing some, you know, young, and it's a great event. So, if you're, you know, young, if that, I'm pretty much anyone, you know, to, to follow you around, have a holiday. Also, I want to congratulate Professor Stanley Witty-Hand, the Gableton University, twenty street Portland. He won the Nobel Prize today along with two other now Nobel laureates for investing in their work on the lithium ion battery. I'm sure everyone here is over in kind of, has a cell phone in your hand, in your pocket, pulled there, the lithium ion battery, your phone would not exist if it wasn't for Professor Witty-Hand and the work of him, colleagues, and even some students that Gableton University have done. So, his research is going on currently, his work is not stopping, and it's pretty amazing that, you know, now in the world, RFP, it's pretty hard to make that retire from the area, so it's regular to do this. Lastly, as always, thank you to everyone from the public for coming. The, regarding this information about the student group plan privatization deal, it is getting to a point that is quite frustrating. Obviously, things are, I'm not saying we're, obviously, the schedule that the RFP permitted is already, you know, we've blown past, you know, deadlines, like I said, publicly, privately, and it's right. And, and I just, I don't know why, you know, that's a part of the problem here. It's, it's, I, I don't know why. Why is there no information that you can, it's, it's very confusing to me as a council member, why are there any, why don't know where the, this group stands, why, why don't anything about? And it's especially frustrating for our employees, our workers, whose jobs and life is literally on the line of this decision, and, and to keep them in the dark is, is extremely wrong. And, and beyond the, you know, morality of that decision, it's really, really bad for the residents and city of things. This is a, this is a serious project and a major renovation that is coming to a close. And this should be a time when we should be ramping up operations. This should be a time when we are, you know, the soonest for is hiring the new, yeah, new employees out of the planet. for the rest of this city of things. This is a, this is a, a serious project and a major renovation that is coming to a close. And this should be a time when we should be ramping up operations, this should be a time when we are, you know, the sewage board is hiring the new, uh, new employees out of the plant, which they came to, because they don't even know if there's gonna be any public employees there. They don't know any details. It's, it's like, I, I, I'm sure this wasn't the intention by any, but we are really screwing the book here. We are really messing this up. So we need to come to a decision. We need to come to a decision. I, I, I would like to hear a clear, definitive answer on where we are in this process before the next campaign, because it's, 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 it's getting to a point where I am seriously worried. Uh, so I would just like to hear something, as I hope they like the part of the decision. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Matson?
I would pass also.
You would pass also? And to, uh, Councilman Lewis, please.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very good, Senator.
Well, I'm standing.
Okay, good.
I have to work out. Uh, yeah, you know, I'm, I'm just, I'm for this, this whole privatization process. For like, two months passed when we were supposed to have a decision come down from the, uh, the bislection committee and, you know, the, the operation, we all had a team from this part of the contract, it was supposed to be a site for a lot of people first. And I don't, I don't know, you know, where Bruce Tony, I don't know they came up with these things, you know, that they thought they were reasonable, but they're obviously not, because we've blown right past it. Uh, you know, we are, you know, we're trying to work a startup process where, I mean, just, was it two days ago, just two days ago, there were ninety events. Um, and this came up with the sewage board meeting yesterday. Um, you know, they, they demanded plant staff, we in all hands on that, to make sure that the fine screen process failed. And just to be clear, there were four months, each one is supposed to process like thirty million dollars a day, uh, and the whole, the whole process just couldn't handle thirty-six million dollars a day. So, you know, the, the systems are, you know, still, I mean, and this, this process shouldn't be, you know, something that, you know, if it was a failure, it's not gonna be such, uh, such a big deal, because there are all these other things happening, because we still have that, or this privatization question hanging, that's what the plant staff did, we still not always have up. Uh, maybe we all hands on that to make sure that it wasn't spilled, it got towards the DC, luckily it spilled into the basement, you know, so that he actually captured, um, treated, instead of spilling out of, out of that building, uh, that would have been, you know, a real, uh, much more, you know, serious issue. Um, but imagine we had seven more people working there. You know, we, we need more hands at this facility right now, as we're starting up. And it's just inconceivable that people aren't taking a job, they don't know if it's gonna be there, um, in a couple of months. So, the plant is kind of firmly in the middle of it. And, I mean, there also, to address, um, there is a little bit of confusion during the public conference, you know, for private operators, you know, manage this facility. It seems inconceivable to me that they would still have the employees, be employed upwards, where, you know, the change in managers, of course, you could say, ten years, change in managers, of course, ten years could see, uh, wild shifts in, you know, what, what happened in the center facility, they would want to be the employer at the facility. And now, this has to take everyone in the facility, losing their current jobs, having to reapply to this, this part of the company. So, I think the plant staff's concerns are all valid. Um, and I, I mean, I've heard Council, I say a lot of stuff, but I just, you know, I don't know if I quite have it, but, you know, he's, he's right, you know, we're treating the plant staff, I mean, early for it right now. We're treating them as like interchangeable tops, and we're treating this whole process like it's not the biggest public works facility the city's involved in managing. I mean, this thing is massive, and this decision is monumental, and, I mean, this body does have some authority to, um, to push this process, to push back on, 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 on information, I mean, how this bislection process. And I have been also asking questions, so it's a, I don't know if it's a good score, but still I've heard back about, you know, which did receive the highest scores, would give us, for maybe, maybe coming out to this election committee, that they are at Southside April seventeenth meeting last month, said by the end of month, by the end of September, uh, we'll probably see some sort of decision coming out of this, uh, this committee and this election committee, and we're still just, just waiting. And I mean, it's, it's frustrating as it remains, somebody who, you know, has to be talking to the audience all the time, as I'm sure, you know, President Scanlon, you know, you're, you're out there talking to these officials, it's a much easier, you're here from a lot of people than usual, you're probably here the same, so it's frustrating as it is really not being able to answer those questions. I can really begin to imagine what it's like for the, the plant staff who are feeling like they're leaving around all the time. So, I, uh, I'm just walking here, there's not that I, it doesn't seem like there's anything that I can provide myself, unless my colleagues sincerely have concerns over where this process is standing, if they sincerely have concerns over the impact on the workforce, then we should all start asking the same questions together. Oh, just another thing, uh, this whole promptly at the sewage treatment, he's, yet again, uh, to our work sessions, that taught us about the construction process, and he told me that he had a, uh, he had a town order meeting, uh, he had, you know, it was a regularly scheduled, uh, meeting, so I don't understand what the breakdown in the, in communication is that we thought he couldn't be able to come to our meeting that day, when I spoke with him, it sounded like you, you would ever, you know, this is how we're meeting to come, you know, to the work session. So, you know, we've got a lot of questions, we're really short on answers, and, you know, everybody is concerned about, um, rumors spreading, everyone's concerned about misinformation floating around, you know, we have a role we need to play to, to get good, accurate, timely information out there, practically, people have all the information, the ones who seem to be complaining the most about misinformation floating around. I want nothing more than to have, uh, access to more information on this, so I can make a good decision, and so that I can inform the officials about what happens going on. Also, the last thing, um, the, uh, the document, so I, you know, I remember that during the, during the budget hearing for the sewage treatment plant budget, um, I asked Judge Hager to refer us with information so we could ever scan, uh, you know, that allocation associated with this facility, so we can get a better sense of what, um, what rate increases might apply in the future. The document should be first, that's with only half for, um, roughly sixty percent of that, so still, going back to work, looking at some answers, so that we can get a more accurate picture of, uh, of what might be, might be still there. That's also just from one of the biggest questions for me the last one, what is this going to cost? As a result, I could say, um, you know, the public understands that, you know, you don't spend all this money renovating this facility and you get zero percent rate increases, compared to paying for it somehow, and I think we owe it to residents of the city. I don't have a great, you guys, this is about for certified facility, we need to know that we're sure the process is all you are, the budget is all you are.
Thank you, Councilman, Councilman O'Grant?
Thank you. Quote will change the, um, legislation registration, so when you register her to a party, is now officially part of that party, which, thank God, I'm not a Democrat anymore, I'm a Libertarian, because I don't have to be part of that old crack anymore. My friends, this is just lies, upon lies, upon lies, brought to you by, it was truly the Democrats. It's all just set as a big pawn to try to win the elections for this common council races. I'm not, which is why I'm not a Democrat anymore, which is why I don't have to be a Libertarian, because we are completely against that, we want a smaller government, which is, you know, Democrats are totally like the biggest government that you see in higher taxes, so, you know, I, I just see that as bad anyway. Um, you know, this, this country is used to fast food and everything instantly on, they're following on, everything runs like that. It's been about ten years we've made this plant, we're going over, we go over, you can't put a timeframe on something if you're trying to do it right. I, I mean, I don't know where you're getting your information from, but I did ask them about who controls the joint sewage treatment center, and it will never be to the management, if we even do hire the management, it would always be the city of Johnson City and Miggottin in control. We're not the worst control of that. There's no way it would happen, because that's already built in. Um, you know, it just seems like you talk about this massive work that we're doing, yes, it is massive. And somebody said, you know, just turn it on, really? I mean, when I was meeting, I helped my brother take this engine apart, uh, during the summer, and we thought we had it all put together, my brother leans over the engine, tells me, turn it on, turn it on, I turned on the key, slammed on the gas, well, the carburetor enflue flamethrowers of fire, of incision, my brother's hair and eyebrows, okay? Because we were missing carbs, because we rushed to put it together. Details matter all the time, all the time. Um, and that leads to something nicer. The Women's Day is coming up on October eleventh. This is for women who are cancer survivors. It is a beautiful night for them to feel beautiful themselves. Um, I'm proud to bring this out for a second here. If you know any women who are cancer survivors, they can go on Eventbrite and look up the Women's Day activities for cancer survivors, and sign up, and they get to have a night of comfort. Thank you.